Okay. It's seven o'clock and I will get ready for the agenda for the Hannover Borough Council meeting today at seven o'clock on October 12th. First thing I need to do is do the pledge of allegiance, so join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Dory, would you roll call for us, please?
Mr. Chesney? Mrs. Spock?
Here.
Mr. Hagberg?
Here.
Mr. Kress?
Here.
Mr. Lockard?
Here.
Ms. Pranzus?
Here.
Mr. Ricart? Mr. Rowland?
Here.
Dr. Rupp?
Here.
Mayor Whitman?
Here.
Solicitor Schultes?
Here.
Andrew Dunford?
Here.
Secretary Felix? We have a quorum.
Prior to conducting business this evening, I need to announce that we did have an executive session, was held this evening from 6:30 until 7:00 prior to the Hannover Borough Council meeting, and involved the following matter, a matter involving the pending PUC rate case section under 708A1 and Section A5 of the Sunshine Act. All right, we have an interesting evening here this evening. It's always interesting with this group of people, and this is even more interesting because we get to interview somebody to join our happy little group. And that's, and I'm not taking light of it, it's a very important, very important thing to do, to interview people to come on this council. Hopefully, the individuals who are interested are interested in doing the best thing for our town and not necessarily for themselves, and that's what we're really all about. So, very, we'll see who, we only have one person so far. We have here, some other people here may be present who are interested in interviewing, so.
Do you want to do public comment before?
I'm sorry, God, I wrote it down. I wrote it down. Forgot it, okay. Public comment. We do have a time before we begin our meeting for a public comment. Is there anyone out there who would like to make any public comment?
Are we moving over to the other side? That's so much better.
Do you want to tell them how to do that?
Not look at their backs?
Oh, no, I'm just talking to Tim. Sorry. Where are you moving?
If I said it at the end, I don't have to buy it.
Mark, would you like to open it up for public comment?
Yeah, those joining us online, you're up here yourself if you'd like to address the council.
I see no one. Anyone present that would like to make a public comment before we begin any of our interviews this evening? Anybody? All right. We'll begin, we have a couple people here, so there might be a couple people interested. So, we'll just begin with, we have one on paper, and the other individuals may have shown up, and hopefully, somebody else is interested. More than Mario, it's great. So, the first person we have is Susie Mazet- M-.
Mazenga.
Say that again for me.
Mazenga.
Would you move up here, please, to the table where the microphone is? All right. And the only requirement is residency one year in the third ward prior to this, you've been in the third ward, and you were registered voter? All right. So, we have some questions in front of us that were prepared the last time that we got Tim on the council. So, I think it's very important that we stick to the questions, so each person who's being interviewed, we're judging them by the same questions, rather than sort of going, I have questions on our own, unless they're questions at the end. So, we'll just start with the first one. Would you like to start, Darlene?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay.
Susie, why are you interested in being on the Hannover Borough Council?
I have always been a service-minded person, and I feel that this is one of the best ways to give back to my community.
Thank you.
Chris, do you want to just go next? So, we'll just kind of keep going around. Would you take number two, please?
Will you be willing to win in the next election? Run in the next election?
Sure.
Okay. How will your work experiences influence your part of being of planning Hannover's future?
I have extensive experience in project management. I have a master's degree in instructional technology and web design, and I have extensive experience with social media and creative writing and technical writing. So, I think I can lend all of my talents to Hannover Borough.
Okay, thank you. Janine?
What are your information sources about Hannover Borough?
I live here. I actually know quite a few people. I'm very much boots-on-the-ground, so I like to walk around and get to know people and talk to people on the street.
Thank you.
Please rate your listening skills from one to 10.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Okay.
She didn't listen very well. Just kidding.
I like that.
No, she rates herself high.
Scott?
I guess to me, are you aware of the required preparation for each of the council and committee meetings?
Yes, and I've actually been following your website closely and reading through all the documentation.
Thank you.
Darlene?
Susie, what's your understanding of the breadth of the business activities that Hannover Borough is responsible for?
In which regard? There's a lot of business activity. Do you mean retail or manufacturing?
We cover a lot, but the business activities that we join in here on Borough Council, which is our taxation, water, sewer, you know, many, many things. Do you have any understanding of what we do here?
I've watched a few of the Zoom recordings, and I'm a quick learner.
Okay, thank you, Susie.
Briefly describe your view of the top three for each of the following subjects below, strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities.
Can you repeat the question?
Briefly describe your view of the top three for each of the subjects below, your strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities.
Subjects below.
Well, you don't see the paper.
They're asking you to list three strengths.
Yeah, so just give you three strengths, right.
It's a poorly worded question.
Thank you.
I don't know if I speak English, I don't know.
Okay, my strengths are, I'm an excellent listener, I'm very empathic, I can put myself in the shoes of other people, I love making connections with people, so those are three of my strengths.
Good.
I guess some of my weaknesses would be, sometimes I get too excited about things to just push forward, but I can usually listen to others.
You can rein yourself in.
Rein me in.
Okay.
And sometimes I'm too self-critical, so I'm always a perfectionist. That would definitely be one of my weaknesses. Opportunities, I am excellent at connecting people with each other. So, I get to know people, I find out what their strengths are, and then I bring those together that will complement each other, and then build from there. So, I'm definitely a people person. I love socializing, and I love seeing places that I've lived flourish.
And the final question, before we give you an opportunity to ask some questions, would be, what are your favorite places to spend time in town?
Man, I walk all over the place. I like walking the back alleys because there's some amazing architecture. Downtown in the square, some of my favorite Art Deco architecture, the library, of course. I would love to spend time in the theater if it's ever open again. But I really like walking past the theater, and in the coffee shops. So, I spend time in Galls &amp; Grinds, I've spent time in Merlin's, I've spent time in Icky Guy, and I love Sea Gypsy.
Oh, who doesn't love Sea Gypsy?
I could spend days in Sea Gypsy.
Doesn't love that place.
Galls &amp; Grinds is really great, so.
Oh, yeah.
Right. And I do agree, there's, I'm walking the back alleys, there's some gorgeous gardens and gorgeous architecture, it's really great, great. I think those are nine questions for you. Do you have any questions for us?
Um, no.
Obviously, you look at the meetings, so you know when we meet, and we meet frequently, and you would be able to meet those times, okay? Any questions?
No, I did my research before I came here, so I got all my questions answered.
Okay, all right, okay, good, all right. Thank you very much. Okay, if you let that paper there, the next person, if there's anyone else here interested.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Susie, for coming, and your responses as well. Thank you. You see Shannon here. Anyone else sitting in the audience who would like to be considered for the Ward Three? You want to come forward, please? Hi!
Hello.
Would you state your name, please?
Gary Greenhold.
Address, please.
453 Carlisle Street.
Okay. All right. I'll sit with Carol. Okay, I see Carol. Nice. Okay, want to start, want to start again with your questions, please, Darlene?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
I'm with you.
I know, I know you're taking notes, go to number one.
Gary, why are you interested in being on the Hannover Borough Council?
Well, I've been here all my life, and I've seen changes coming and going, and I'm used to the way the town used to be, and I just think I can help preserve the local traditions and heritage of Hannover. And I have some motivation, too.
Anything else? I mean.
What's the motivation you were alluding to?
Family, that's all here.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just wanted to show you.
Could I follow up on that question? Preserving local traditions, does that mean you're opposed to change?
It does not.
Oh, good.
I do like change, but I like the heritage of Hannover.
Oh, I agree.
And I believe it needs to be preserved somewhat.
Sort of bring them together.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And you've lived here all of your life.
All my life.
All right, thank you, Gary.
Chris, do you want to take number two?
Okay, Gary, will you be willing to run in the next election?
I don't know, I can't really answer that at this point. It depends.
Few years off, so you've got a few years to think about it.
Yeah, my retirement might come before that, and so I don't know what will happen at that point, so, I mean, providing everything.
Well, I retired, and then I got on council, so, yeah, that would work fine for you.
Yeah, that would work better, maybe.
Just for Clarence's point, it's, you'd be fulfilling the unexpired term of Ray Hoover, which is like two years and two months or something.
Right.
From now.
Right, right.
Okay, so you're.
Yeah, so, I would, I would assume that would go all right, you know, and I would run, yeah.
So, that would be December 31, 2023, when that, your term would be up, you'd have to run then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully, I have more time at that time.
And how will your work, work experiences or work background influence your part of planning Hannover's future?
Well, I'm a small business owner in town here, an employer, and I'm, to basically survive, I have to be fiscally responsible, and I'm just used to that, and sometimes I see small governments and big governments wasting money, in my view, and I just feel like I could help rein some of that spending in, you know.
You do know, the last two years, we've been operating on the 2019 budget, so we have been really working hard. Do you have some examples of, just share it.
Do you have some examples of spending on council's behalf that you think that you would say, like, this is a place I'd like to rein it in?
Well, I don't know about locally, but I don't think government has any business being in profit-making business, you know, I mean, they have to, a business has to support itself, and.
Good news, we're not running a profit.
Right, right. Is that good or bad?
Oh, is it my turn? For what are your information sources about Hannover Borough?
Friends, a lot of them are other business owners, people who worked in the borough I know. If I see something or hear something, or evening sun, I'll go to the website, the borough's website, and check it out, the details.
Okay, thanks.
Small town, know everybody.
Please rate, please, please rate your listening skills from one to 10. Why do we always get the same question?
We're going to start in the same place.
It's like, you know, a typewriter instead of. I'm just being silly. Are you aware of the required preparation for each of the council and committee meetings?
I'm not completely informed with how it goes, but I suppose I'm, you would be informed of details before you have to make a vote on something.
Oh, yeah, you get a lot of details.
Yeah.
You get plenty of information, really, you do.
I assume that, I just don't know the process exactly, so, yeah. Thank you.
Gary, what's your understanding of the breadth of the business activities that the Borough, Hannover Borough Council is responsible for? Do you have any ideas?
A little bit, yeah.
Okay.
Apparently, they've run the water, sewer, and trash departments, which is unique for a borough or a city to be involved in, under my understanding, and, but since the fact that I've been here all my life, I never knew that until more recently, and I never paid attention to that, I just figured that was a government or a city thing, and, but the more I find out, it sounds like it's just providing enough resources for itself, and so, I don't know, I'm kind of, I don't know enough about the details of that, so I would be curious to find out some of that.
You'll be filled in fast enough.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Gary.
Okay, briefly describe your view of the top three for each of the subjects below, your strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities.
Well, my strengths, if I know a subject, or if I'm versed in a subject, I'm very aggressive to try and stick to what I know. At the same time, well, I don't know, strengths. Being able to be convinced of something if I don't know enough about it, to be able to understand or get a view from someone else. Weaknesses, potentially get emotional sometimes about something, but.
It's a strength, I think. That's, that's good.
Yeah. Opportunities, I would hope that I would have the ability to make a difference, you know, in some changes, or some retain, retaining of procedures, policies.
And what are your favorite places to spend time in in our town?
Downtown, walk the pub circuit, we use rail trails sometimes, used to go to the Y a lot more, don't get there much anymore, but, yeah, things like that.
That's a good thought.
Walk the streets a lot, too, in the evenings, yeah.
Good.
Not necessarily the back alleys.
Good. Do you have any questions for us? It is a, it's a pretty significant amount of time, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's like Scott said, it's two-year, couple months vacancy is what you know, so that pretty much answered what I was going to ask.
Roughly four to five meetings a month, depending on your committee's schedule?
Forty-five.
Four to five.
Yeah.
Not forty-five, thank God.
Yeah.
I would be asking for pay, because I would starve.
Four to five.
So, depending on what committees you sit on, we are all at the finance committee every month, we are all at Borough Council every month, and then typically, you would have two or three other committees that you would attend either bi-monthly, usually bi-monthly, sometimes budget season.
Yeah, it's all evening stuff, though, right?
But it's all evening stuff, yeah.
Yes, it's all evening, so, right, if that works with your business, yeah, it's all evening, right. And for both Gary and for Susie, the people, the staff of the borough do an excellent job of giving us information ahead of time for us to plan and think and ask questions, so we don't just come in blindly.
Yeah, we do, we get a very comprehensive package prior to every meeting, and it's almost a week ahead of time.
I assumed that, I just never actually saw it. I've been to other meetings as a, just a spectator, and everybody seemed to know what was being talked about, so I figured that somehow.
I guess, and the other Borough Council members can speak for themselves, I mean, I guess it would be nice if you, it takes a while to learn the stuff.
Oh, no doubt.
To learn the vocabulary and the plans and all that stuff, so it takes, I think it takes about a year or two to learn some of this stuff, so, you know, I think that we would, hopefully, you would want to run it, run then, because you'd be so much smarter.
Yeah, hate to waste all that.
Yeah, right, right, exactly, exactly.
It's very, well, it's somewhat different, a lot of the mentalities, than private business.
I believe that. I'm not familiar with it, but I believe it, yes.
Yeah, it's one of the, I can't think of the gentleman that wrote the book, but they talk about, you know, private business that takes money and turns it into, in theory, more money, and in the public sector, you take money and you turn it into service for the community. So, you measure, it's measured differently.
Right.
I think it was something Peters that wrote the book, I can't think of his, his name at the moment, but it was, I thought that was an interesting perspective. There's still a point of being responsible, you know, you can't ever spend, I don't think anything can survive if you spend.
Exactly. Any questions for us, Gary? Do we have anyone else in the audience who is interested in being interviewed? No? All right, okay. I checked with the solicitor ahead of time, so I'm just double-checking here, making sure my directions. We, if we have a need to deliberate, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One thing, we do have one guest via Zoom, and I don't know if that person's interested.
Justin?
Yes.
He's actually in Penn Town, Jim.
Oh, okay.
I'm pretty sure he's not coming for the Ward Three seat.
Okay. I figured that person, I've spoken up.
I did, too, but I didn't.
Okay, well, thanks, no, thank you. We want to make sure we do everything right. I appreciate that a lot, right. So, we, our next step is to nominate and select, however, if we have a need for deliberation, we can go into a caucus room to deliberate if we have any questions or concerns about either one of the candidates or both. I don't, I mean, question, that sounds bad, not question or concerns or negative, just anything we need to deliberate. Does anyone feel that we have a need to deliberate?
I nominate Suzanne Mazenga.
All right, we don't need a second. Is anyone else nominate, ask for another nomination, correct? All right? And can I ask for, does anyone else have anyone else that want to nominate? Scott?
Can I nominate? I don't know exactly how this works, so.
Yes, you can.
I would nominate Gary.
Gary.
That's.
Yes, you can, all right, okay. So, we have two people nominated, so then we vote in the order of nominations, am I correct?
Correct.
All right. Is it a roll call vote? Is it a?
It is a roll call vote.
It's a roll call vote, okay. We're going to roll call vote then for the first person, which would be Susie. All right? Dory, if you would, please?
Okay, Mrs. Spock?
It would just be yes or, yes or no, am I correct?
Four, which one are we doing?
Four in favor for four or not?
Which one are we doing?
We're voting for Susie? So, you're saying four or?
No.
Against, you're saying against, no, all right.
No?
All right.
Mr. Hagberg?
Um, yes.
Mr. Kress?
I'm confused exactly, are we voting?
First, we vote for Susie because she was nominated.
We vote in order of nominations, right.
All right.
Right. Tim?
Mr. Kress? For Suzanne Mazenga?
I'm here, I'm here, just hold on for a minute.
That's okay.
Um, no.
Mr. Lockard?
No.
Ms. Pranzus?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
No.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Okay, we have three in favor of Ms. Mazenga and four against.
All right, so then we go to the next nomination?
Okay, for Mr. Greenhold.
All right.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mr. Hagberg?
Yes.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lockard?
Yes.
Ms. Pranzus?
No.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Did you vote yes?
I did, I did vote.
Can she vote yes?
Can you vote?
You can, you can, it's a different nomination.
I didn't know that, okay, I'm sorry, I was.
Want to go back and revote?
No, 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 I wasn't.
I'm just kidding, no.
Okay, yeah, that's okay.
We don't do this very often.
No, right, hopefully, we don't do it very often, you're right, all right. So, we have a successful candidate.
Six in favor of Mr. Greenhold and one against.
All right, okay, congratulations. There's some other paperwork that you need to attend to that Nan or the solicitor can share with you at the conclusion of our meeting, and then we'll have you take the oath of office at our finance meeting, which is the 20.
I thought I was doing it tonight.
The 20th, is the 20th of finance workshop?
I thought we were doing it tonight. You were supposed to do it tonight.
It's on the paper for tonight, I don't know.
What's that date, Dory, of our workshop meeting?
Well, the first question is, they're saying, I was still thinking it's tonight.
I thought the.
Oh, it has to be tonight?
I thought I was swam in tonight.
It's on here, the solicitor just explained that there are different things that needs to fill out, papers.
We have it, she has it for the.
Do you have them all?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just need to go over to the secretary, Dory, and she's got some papers to, I mean, I don't.
Yeah, go over to Dory. All right, do you have the right things?
Well, I have, yeah, I mean, we have the residency requirement, and then we have Suzanne doing the oath of office, but we need, just need to sign the affidavit of residency, so I need a driver's license to. so I need a driver's license to motorize, that's all.
There you go.
Tim, you've taken up the whole screen. It's your name on the whole screen. I'm not sure what that means, but it just means you're the only one.
You're larger than life, Tim.
He's the last man standing out there.
Is that what it is?
He's the last man standing.
It's like the Tim Kress screen. That's a good thing, I know, by the way.
Since I put the trash in here, I probably should have drank it out of it.
Dory, do you have his email address? Or he'll, I'll have to get a Hannover Borough email address. I can read all this stuff.
And I bought the protection policy for $13 a month, so if I lose it, throw it on the ground, pack it up with the car, pull a bullet through it, it's covered.
It's a good, they're ridiculously priced.
Well, I, I can tell you, I used that, and, I have it if you'd like.
Are we all set?
Yes.
Okay.
Should I be a photographer? You just want to try your new phone, that's all.
This is my new, has three, I'm not sure what all three lenses do. I'll show them, you can take a picture.
Somebody pick it up, because this is, this is the question. This is the agenda.
We could, we could do it at the workshop meeting, and he can begin to participate immediately. What are we, what are we looking for?
I think that was why we were going to do it next week, so we didn't all have to sit around and wait for this. I'll go get them. Hey, we're printed out, waiting there. I can go ahead, does I have my copy? I'll do it a while, and I still expect. Are you ready? She's got the, I have the oath here.
What story going for?
Raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Gary Greenhold.
I, Gary Greenhold.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of council with fidelity.
Of council with fidelity.
That's it, you're officially sworn in. Now we just have to wait for the paper to sign it.
It's almost like you'd want to have. Well, is it some level like you want to have your lawyer read over that?
Scott, we have to finish the meeting. Scott, Scott, we have to finish the meeting. Thank you, Dory. Thank you, Susie, for your interest. Thank you again, Gary, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Last thing on our agenda then is an opportunity for public comment, in case there's anybody at, looks like the only person there is Tim. Any other public comment from Tim? Or anyone in the audience, public comment? If not, then we'll officially close our meeting at, what's it, 7:35. Thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.